I'll call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward abides by the Nebraska Obergeese Act in conducting business. They copy the Nebraska Obergeese Act as displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. If participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council, the president shall approach the podium, state your name and address with a court's record and ask a limited remarks to five minutes. All remarks should be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Wilkins.
Present.
Back.
Here.
Camper.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Mallor.
Singleton.
Here.
Schmidt.
Hendricks.
Present.
I think we will have a couple of councilmen maybe joining us here a little bit later during the meeting, possibly. First item this evening is item number one, minutes, consideration of approval of draft minutes of August 20, 2019.
Move to.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second is in for discussion. Say no, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
voting in favor, welcome back, Captain Coleman, Singleton, Hendricks.
Item number two, consideration of approval of draft minutes of special budget work session on August 29, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second is in for discussion. Say no, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
voting in favor, welcome back, Captain Coleman, Singleton, Hendricks.
Yes, we have items three and four of the consent agenda.
Move.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second is in for discussion. Say no, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
voting in favor, welcome back, Captain Coleman, Singleton, Hendricks.
As I mentioned in my introduction, we reserve the right to rearrange the order of items on the agenda as necessary. I did have conversations with the two councilwomen from Ward One regarding items nine and 12. Yes, nine and 12. And so I'm going to move those up now, and my understanding is that they'd like to have those items tabled. So if there's no objection from the council, I would ask someone to make a motion to table.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Yeah, well, can we do those together, Kelly? Can we do those separately? Get the table? What's that? Are you correct?
For the budget.
Oh, for the budget.
Yeah, that's just.
Just the budget.
Yes.
Okay. But it's not like that for other public charities.
Any good look at the notice that's for the budget? Statutory.
Attorney.
Three. Three. I don't know, you think good.
We got a motion to table, item number nine. We'll do them separately.
Okay.
Number nine, is there a motion to table?
On motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second is in for discussion. Say no, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Understand, is a motion to table item 12?
Yes.
Your motion and a second.
Yeah, I can say something.
While we're having discussion, I'll give you a vote.
Okay. So we have a motion to table item 12 and a second. Is that okay? So the motion is saying before we do the vote, just a quick discussion item. So just kind of clarify where we're at with this process. So the item number nine had to do with all of the right of ways being dedicated for this that the city owns. I know there was some confusion as to whether that impacted other right of ways, but this was only ours. But in order to keep this clean, we were going to go ahead and table that as well, so there is no confusion. Item 12 had to do with the these eminent domain. My understanding was some conversations with the councilwomen from the ward that the association want to have a meeting and be able to be briefed on where things stood. So I would recommend in the next couple of weeks before this would come back, that if you're utilizing an attorney or however you're organizing your conversations, to reach out to Department of Transportation and make sure that you have all your questions answered as far as what the process is. And if you have any questions for us, obviously have that version. Your attorney also contact the city, City Hall. We do have an open records request form that we can utilize if needed depending on what documents that you're requesting. But we do plan in on that in two weeks to bring these items back to continue the process. Anything else?
Just, I know that the two council members from the ward have been trying to set up a meeting with, a follow-up meeting from, because we had a meeting in June with them. So a follow-up meeting with them. And so I think that's the biggest, most important one, is to set that meeting and get whatever documentation and people that they need in the room, whether it's NDOT people, engineering people, get them in the room and assemble whatever data, documents, anything else that they need, have that pinned all down. Because it seemed like after the last meeting, we've been sorting out, trying to get the meeting together and it's not happened. So, and then I have documents, we have timelines, we have all the stuff that's going on. I have information from NDOT that they gave me today on contacts and we just.
We'll just give you everything that we have and you can decide, you know, at that point, so that we can keep the process moving forward. But we just want to make sure you understand that this is a two-week period to get this done. So with that, you had a motion and a second to table, in the discussion. Say no, please register your votes. Please put the votes. Do you need to have the call members, council members join us? Welcome. All right. Item number five, this is a public hearing. Notice of hearing and budget summary for the purpose of hearing support, opposition, criticism, suggestions or observations of taxpayers waiting to the 2019-2020 City of Seward municipal budget. Greg.
Yes, the budget was presented to you on Wednesday and sent out. We had a work session last week where we walked through it painstakingly slowly to make sure that everything got addressed that you guys wanted to talk about. We are not requesting an increase in the levy in regards to our levy, but the tax ask has gone up as we documented at the work session. Airport authority is the same in regards to their tax request. They're leaving the levy as is for another year. We'll have those, we'll have three items that we want you to consider as amendments that we talked about and one additional item. And so we'd like to move through those. We'll note that the initial budget included an electric utility increase of 3% and after recommendations from the work session, we did process those and come up with the numbers in regards to moving that to a 1.5% increase, just based on general discussion. That will be one of our motions tonight. The second motion will be the engineering information and putting that into the budget in regards to the outfall for the wastewater treatment plant. The recommendation to move the outfall from Plum Creek to the Big Blue River as we kind of went over with Tim. It's the first engineering element of looking at updating the treatment plant. And we got that estimate, I think, the day of or the day before the work session. And so just to get the engineering in is what we're recommending right now. And then we'll look at capitalizing and looking at actually doing that portion of the project in your next budget year. So that'd be the 2020-21 budget year, probably in October. So that one's in there. And then the last one would be a recommendation by the administration specific to just even this last week. We'd like to look at adding, after we've gone through not having Marilyn around now for approximately almost six months since she left in February, we've been reassessing and reassessing amongst myself, Bonnie and Nick, our needs in City Hall. We only have three people covering the up-front desk. And so we'd like to go over that with you and get a recommendation on potentially nine months salary and coverage for an additional file, you know, utility clerk one in City Hall to alleviate some issues. We can walk through that when we get to it. So right now, Nick, anything else to hit on before we hit on those individual ones? And we'll turn it over to them in the public. Okay. I guess first, Mayor, if it's okay, will take any questions generally about the budget?
From the council?
From the council?
Sure. Does the council have any follow-up questions or comments at this time? If not, at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment portion of the public hearing of item number five. If anyone from the public wishes to comment on item number five, this is your opportunity to come forward and let us know. If not, then I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing, item number five, and return back to the council for any questions or comments.
If not, we can walk through now the three specific items and then we can add in the appropriate amendments to the ordinances as we go. So the first one would be is the recommendation, the budget as proposed includes a 3% rate increase on utilities. As noted at the work session, if we were to reduce it to 1.5%, this kind of was discussed, it would be a reduction of $144,000, correct Nick?
And revenue towards the electric department.
Total revenue, 9.7-744,000 dollars total revenue. Remember, a massive portion of that is used to pay off power purchase from NPPD.
Are you on six right now?
We're still on five.
Okay.
Just having a general discussion. And then we'll go into the motions.
Yeah.
When we get there.
The motion on five.
On six.
Right. So I need, I have to probably close that public hearing.
Can I ask this question? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm confused. When is the time for the public to ask questions about the general? I had a couple of questions on a couple of line items, when is that? I'm confused.
Sure. That was item five, when I talked about the public hearing. If you want to just hold on, we're going, as, we're going to close that public hearing here at some point, and then we'll open up the public hearing for number six. And if that's talking about the, I would. Rather go back to five?
I would rather go, if we're going to take public, because the next line item is specifically the additional tax request, where this line item that we have open right now is just, the budget is general.
So if you wanted to comment on item number five, is that what you wanted to do?
I just had, yeah, I had.
Yeah, that's fine. What I'm going to do is I'll go ahead and reopen the public comment portion. No, you're fine. Come on forward.
It's just clarification.
Yeah. But I just, from a formality standpoint, I just need to reopen the public comment portion, and you're welcome. State your name and address.
Number here, key 1126, Eastridge. The first question I had, because I was kind of confused, it's on page 45 of your packet. And it's on the street department. And it's an item that says Carol K. paving and storm sewer project. Is that related to the Carol K. extension or is that something different? The amount spent was 124,000 and then the next budget years for 10. Am I confused as to what that refers to?
The 124,404 was the estimated CIP.
And I have to talk in layman's language.
That's, it's basically what we spent on the project this past year. The additional 10,000 is just a recommended coverage if there were to be an additional overage charge by the city.
And so this was basically for the Carol K. extension, the road?
Yes.
Okay. I have another question. I've been asking for this information for a number of years. I sent requests for records and said you never can get that information. And I said, tell me how much money you have spent on the project. And the last response I got to that question was three paragraphs from a former city employee, but I would call garbage. And I requested, requested that information from Greg from City this time. And the number you shot us was 169,000, which I was a little confused because that was the exact number on the original grant. And now the budget shows 120. I'm just, I need some clarification on those numbers.
I would have to go back and look at it for you, Linda. But there's also num, there may be expenditures on engineering that predate this current fiscal year that we're closing out, which would be the 124,404. So if we, if we expended more dollars, like 40,000, 45,000.
That's the number you shot me in that email a couple of months ago.
Yes.
Was the 169, which I, we just found a little curious because it was the exact same number as the grant.
As, once we expend all of our funds as in the grant, the state takes over any other additional payments.
Okay. Thank you.
We pay, we pay upfront and then they pay on the construction in the backend of the project. And the reason that the 10,000 is in there is just a recommendation by the city engineer. If something happens that we might have to owe money for, for something in that project while it's being constructed, he wanted a placeholder of $10,000. So that would be the 10,000.
So according to the grant, you still will be responsible for the 20% of the construction?
No. Our 20% was paid upfront. We paid the 20% on all the engineering costs on the upfront end, so that they will pay all the capital construction cost on the back, the 80%.
And that doesn't, that, okay. The next one down, under paving East Hillcrest Drive, 175 feet east of Eastridge, our street, to the Plum Creek Bridge. And, and that's out in year two for 225,000. My question is, what is that for? Because you're going to pay part of East Hillcrest Drive? You go from a street to tar and gravel, and then you're going to pay a number of feet to the bridge?
The city engineers.
225,000.
Yes, the city engineers here. Jake, you want to address that one specific?
Yep. So the plan is after Carol K. Boulevard is done, that project is completely closed out, then we can improve that portion of Hillcrest Drive.
But it's going to be a number of feet. It's not going to be the whole, you're going, you're going to go from the street and then you're go, going to go 175 feet from Eastridge, not improve it. And then you're going to improve it from 175 feet to the bridge. And then it's going to be Carol.
Right. So that.
And does that somehow make any sense?
175 feet from Hill, from Eastridge is where the concrete stops. So that's where we're going to start with that project. And there's a future project to start from that point again at West all the way to.
And so that is total city money that has nothing to do with the grant money?
Correct.
Okay. I just, just a clarification. I had a question on the Hillcrest Bridge inspection. I understand that bridge has been declared a critically fractured bridge, which means one of the spans is cracked. Therefore, it falls onto inspection every other year. And I know the state said they would help pay for it one time. And then you are responsible for that inspection every other year to five to seven thousand dollars, right? Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Except for the portion when you mentioned that something is cracked. There's not necessarily any crack with that.
Well, that's why it's a critically fractured bridge.
It's a fracture-critical grid, because it has a steel member in tension. That's the reason.
Right.
Doesn't mean there's a crack.
It doesn't mean there's a crack, but it has high potential to crack.
Higher than any other bridge that we build now.
Correct.
Correct.
That's correct. I think I checked on that. So there's a possibility of that bridge needing repli, everybody knows that's a horrible bridge.
Oh, yeah.
And everybody buys that. And the cost of that bridge replacement is about 1.5 million.
Yes.
Is that correct? I think you need to factor that in when you're looking at this whole area improvement. And there's a lot of cost out there. There's also an item in the budget of the Carol K. culvert of 50,000. I take that, is that 50,000 included the 124,000 that you already said you spent on the project? Or is that culvert a different?
That's a different.
It's a different.
That's a different, okay, that's, that's my question.
It's north, way north near Plum Creek.
All right. I guess it, just a lot of questions.
Yep.
And, and then on page, pocket page, packet page 94, under administration, oh, it's engineering consulting. And I'm very confused about, you say we've paid, you've paid all the upfront costs on the Carol K. project. And so these engineering costs, which I see have escalated a lot in the last couple of years, ever. Any of those engineering?
Linda, what page are you on?
Pardon?
What page are you on?
94. And so those engineering, are all engineering costs kind of put in one basket? Or are they delineated out per project? You know, you have it, for example, in, in 216, 17 was 4,000. We jumped to 82,000. We jumped to 140,000. And we're projecting 73,000. And to me, that seemed kind of strange. I don't understand. And so I was just kind of wondering, are all engineering costs for all projects, look, grouped into this one basket?
With the street project, yes. They are. The reason that you see the ebb and the flow, so that it goes up and then now it's coming back down, is we didn't have our city engineer on staff before, a year ago today, approximately. And so previously, as you saw those escalating, the s, the engineering cost for the Waverly Road project, Carol K., I believe some other projects that were in previous years, that's what fell into there. Now those are engineered predominantly by the city engineer internally, because we have some that they can actually do, design and draw and stamp documents. For instance, the East Seward project that we're working on, Jake designed that, engineered it. And so we have this reduction in costs now because we're not paying an outside engineering firm.
But, but the cost went up. We were at 4,000 and we went to 82 and then 140. The cost didn't go down, engineering cost increased.
Well, then it goes down to 73.
So the fourth, okay, 4,000.
It drops to 73, so that's why I was just kind of confused. We had a really low cost, kind of a higher cost, mediocre, and then a little bit of a drop.
Yes.
But it's still a huge increase from the 4,000 to 73. And I was just wondering how that was, why that was.
Okay. We had 4,000 in 2016-17. I wasn't here, so I'd have to go back and get you the information about what specific projects were being engineered at that time.
Well, Carol K. project.
We can.
Well, I, I have the data.
Okay. Again, 2017, 2018 would be Carol K., Waverly Road are the two big ones there. This fiscal year, there was a number of projects budgeted, but we only expended 73,000 of the budget, 140,000. And so partially that's because we passed that budget before we ever had a city engineer. And so the city engineer was included in there. So if we didn't hire the city engineer, we had to send that to the outside engineering firms. So we had to include it in our budget to be able to expend it. That's why we're under this year. We budgeted 140. We have, we're estimating that we'll expend 73,000. Next year, we're recommending it go down to 5,000 because Jake's in-house engineering.
And so another question on the engineering, that's what's on packet, packet page 107. There's another distribution that was for engineering and consulting. And there's different numbers in there. Didn't understand why there, we have two line items for engineering and consulting.
Hold on. Let's back all this up. Okay. I see where we're at now. All right. Back it up, Linda.
All right.
You were looking at on page 40 of 94.
Right, 94.
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission, right. And so that's a different.
That's engineering and consulting for the levy.
Okay.
That's, we don't have anywhere else to put the levy because it doesn't have a department. It's serving.
I was just kind of confused.
No, that's fine. I was confused too. I assumed you were talking about streets. So let's back up. So page 45 and 46, the 82,000 and 140, that's a one-time engineering cost to re-accredit the levy. So that's a one-time project. We are done with, we're still undertaking that project. And they're working on it right now. That is technically done by street, but we don't put it under street because we cannot use street funds from the state, the feds or anybody else, to expend it on the levy, even though it's a street department. So we hit it, we didn't hide it, but the only place it can land to be separated out. Planning Commission. Now let's go to 58.
Okay. And so then the engineering, and so possibly that makes more sense to me.
Yes.
I was trying to figure out why I was spending that money.
Now I see where you're going. Yes.
And, and whatnot. And so that was, like, when I, I'm not good with.
Engineering consulting, the one you're looking at here on page, is this the one you're looking at, 107? 107, these are internal small projects. These are the smaller projects. So if, for instance, Mel and his crew right now are working on Rainbow Avenue and Concrete, if that project was large enough that we needed to, we're building and doing everything, we're not, we're not sending it out for people to bid on the project. We may have some small engineering costs associated with a storm pipe or something. That is this.
That's that line. Okay.
The actual engineering cost for your project, the big projects, is in the CIP line. We have to include that in the CIP cost. So your individual engineering, I didn't know we were talking about planning commission, sorry. Your individual engineering would be lined up under whatever project you're working on. So East Seward, if we had something for that, it would be under East Seward. All the funds expended so far on Carol K. have all been engineering costs.
And that was through GE or?
GE, that is correct.
So if I hear you correctly, you're saying that you anticipate no further expenditures on that road project?
On Carol K.
On Carol K. Because that was not my understanding from the state, but I may have misunderstood what they told you.
Until the project is bid and let, we don't know. Because there's still undonesed with the issue we were talking about tonight with right-of-way acquisition. That number is indeterminate.
But you say the city has no exposure on construction.
I'd have to go back and look at the full contract. We've expended all the funds that we will expend at this point until the project is done and there's a final bill.
I think you look at the contract, it's an 80/20. And I think there's some exposure later on with construction. But I'd have to, that's a whole different, thank you for answering those line item. And next time we need to do it on the.
My apologies for not being set on that. Planning Commission.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to ask.
Yeah, of course. Since we have it open, does anyone else want to comment on item number five? If not, then I'll go ahead and close the public summit portion of the public hearing, item number five, and then go back to Greg.
We were discussing reduction of the electrical utility rate from the recommended 3% that was offered in the budget that we considered at the work session, down to 1.5%. As we adopt the budget in the next round of items, we'll need a motion as a separate item on that to make an amendment to the budget. And so any questions, specific comments about that rate? I know we talked at it at length during the work, work session. So if you want to reiterate any of the reasons again.
And just to review, that money will go into the fund to help rebuild it back up? No, we use it immediately?
Because your deficit spending on.
I got it. Okay. Thank you.
No. But the recommendation, again, as we discussed, it's looking at a ratio of revenue to income.
Got it.
Operating income to revenue. So that, and that's just a benchmark, as we said from our auditors.
I'll make a motion to amend the 3% to 1.5.
Not there yet.
Oh, I can't wait.
Nope, we're just making sure we got all your questions answered.
We'll get there.
And then we'll get there.
But we will let you make that motion when the time comes.
Okay. The second one is, let's see, the engineering cost, it's line, the line item that it goes into, specifically, you want to look in your budget books, is 413.08 wastewater production, engineering and consulting. Nick has added in exactly 87,000, which is what the estimate we got from Olson is, based on, based on the total cost of the project. So again, it's an estimate. So. Any questions on that project? Again, this is engineering to design a new outfall that will be utilized by the current wastewater facility, which will prolong our ability to bring on the new one as well and then also benefit the new treatment process when that comes online after this. So by reducing the number of. So by reducing the number of, uh, way that different outflows go into the river, it's a larger body of water. And so, uh, it helps keep numbers down on our permitting. And it's a recommendation of both the state and our engineers. And then the last one would be, it would be an adjustment to the three utility, uh, lines. And we can talk about this if you have any specifics, but we're looking at nine months. This will give us a few months here to finalize the job description, uh, internally at City Hall, since we've had everybody kind of moving around and reassessing assignments in regards to claims, payroll, um, looking at, uh, assistance with my position in regards to administrative assistance. Uh, currently, there's no one assigned to do that, and so we've been trying to work through that. Uh, and then also, we have an issue with, um, we have some employees that have built up, because they've been with us a long time, a lot of vacation time and things like that, and so the coordinating of trying to get people out, because you can really only be down one, otherwise, somebody's covering it by themselves the whole day, which for audit purposes, safety purposes, uh, just the general feeling and camaraderie of the employees is hard. And so, we'd like to get three months to get that all settled, make sure the job description matches what we want in regards to Bonnie, myself, and Nick, and then look at bringing that person on after the first of the year, after we get approval from you in regards to any changes that we might need. And then we just bring them out at that bottom tier, utility clerk one. I can answer more questions specific, but that's generally the purpose for that.
It will be a full-time position?
It will be a full-time position. And I meant to get around to, we were kind of discussing on and off, and I think we got hurried again in the work session, so. But we noted it, and wanted to bring it back to you to discuss, so.
One of the things at the very end of our work session was Mr. Boss's, engineering of different charges to different utilities or entities. And that was one of the ones that Helen brought up that we were asking for.
It broke.
And to be broke down, I think that's what it was. The costs, uh, with every, every area is getting charged for their engineering fees.
Yeah.
That are broken down.
That's, that.
Did I look at that?
Yeah. It's in the bu- the engineering fee for each utility is in the budget, so the fee we pay.
Specifically that, but.
Yeah, okay.
The amount that's, that we pay for Jake, that's split by three, that's in there already, that was in one of the notes. Do you have that, no one note that is, Nick, or what page that's on?
You mean, you think what?
It would be an engineering budget.
But it's also listed in each individual, under engineering for each individual utility, we show that out. So that's, is in there. Um, and again, the total estimated cost for the position for nine months is fifty-eight thousand ninety-six dollars. We split three ways evenly amongst the utilities, as a utility clerk, so.
Any questions about that?
Anything else on that one? That is all we have in regards to recommendations to finalize the budget. Nick has gone through the process with our, our auditors and budget, uh, reviewers, and so he knows the process that he'll undertake after we make these motions. Today, we'll file a new notice that, that notes any changes you made from the original public notice that went out, and that goes out after you adopt it tonight, so we'll go through that process. Because we haven't changed it the last few years, so we haven't had to do that, but. Other questions generally regards to the budget?
Just a comment.
Yes.
Um, thank you for all of your hard work, everybody, city staff, and for being good stewards of taxpayer money and not having to recommend a, a tax rate increase. I think that's, you know, uh, we have rising costs all the way around, but you guys do a really good job of spending the money and, and taking care of business, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Um, I'll just note the hard work, especially Nick's here, and he's been quiet for most of this hearing, but, uh, he worked tirelessly on this. As being his first budget, again, he came from the auditing background, so he'd been auditing municipalities for years and years, uh, and other governmental entities as part of his background. But coming in on this side, uh, I saw many of those hours that he worked at night, same thing with Bonnie for all the years that she did it as well. Uh, that's a painstaking process, uh, checking and rechecking and reverifying and working, dragging department heads in by their ears sometimes to get those final numbers. But, uh, he did a great job, and I was happy to work with him on it, and I commend our department heads. You know, when we did ask or ask them to give us a new number, relook at something, if we needed some cuts in some places, they were willing to take a look at stuff, uh, and be on top of it, so we really do appreciate it. And again, we try to take all your comments, I know as we went through this process, there's lots of comments coming in throughout the year, whether it was, hey, take a look at the ballfields, what more can we do there? Can we look at increasing some stuff for Parks and Rec, just helping out there, uh, with the new, again, the only, the other position we'll be adding, which we already talked about, is in Parks and Rec, we'll have another full-time employee to help offset some of those, uh, workloads as we continue to expand the city parks, the golf course, everything that we've been taking on. And so, I commend the department heads and everybody that showed up for the work session to answer you guys' questions, so.
Close the public. So with that, we'll close the public hearing for item number five, and move on to item number six, which is also a public hearing. This is a notice of special hearing for the purpose of hearing support, opposition, criticism, suggestions, or observations of taxpayers relating to sending the final tax request a different amount than the prior year tax request. Greg.
Yes, this is just a formal process, again, it is a public hearing, but it entails that we are requesting more funds in total funds through the property tax request, but the levy remains the same, as we've talked about. Uh, we've worked to do for a number of years now. But the tax request, because evaluation increases and everything else has gone up across the city, we're growing the city, and, and we, we get both sides of the coin, like that, that means we are requesting more funds to help offset those increased costs. And so, that's, that's essentially what this portion of it is.
So we have the item six A, we're gonna start going down.
Yeah, six A.
So six A, consideration for approval of an additional one percent increase in restricted funds. What's that, we have a hearing? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over that. So for item number six, because it's a public hearing, we have to have a, a public comment portion, again, like we did for item five. So I'm gonna open up the public comment portion of the public hearing for item number six. So then from the public, wish to comment on item number six. Seeing no one, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing for item number six. Now we can go to item six A, it says consideration for approval of an additional one percent increase in restricted funds. We just require the motion.
Move to approve.
Do the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Do the motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. Item six B, consideration for approval of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty municipal budget, and authorize the filing of budget forms.
This, this will be the item that has the amendments, so Kelly, just for formal process, do we want to move this, second it? And then during discussion of this item, we'll go ahead and start doing the, move our way through the amendments.
Yes.
So move to approve?
Yep.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
All right, the first item that we have, uh, would be a motion to amend the budget to reduce the electrical utility increase, ra- rate increase to one point five percent, but it can be whatever you want it to be, this is the time to do it. But as we prepared it and looked up the numbers for you, it was one point five percent.
Okay, I will make the motion to amend the, the prior, uh, range of three percent to one point five percent.
Do the motion, is there a second? Leave a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please weigh the votes.
Yep, this next one will be, in order, would be a motion to amend, and I'll give you the line item. Account number four one three point oh eight wastewater production, engineering and consulting, to increase that line item by eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Someone like to make that motion?
This is for the wastewater outfall engineering.
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
Do the motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please weigh the votes.
And for purposes of, we'll go through it real quick. Um, I don't know that we'll list all the line items off for you, but we'll note what they are. To add the, the recommendation on the employee, in the water, wastewater, and electric utilities, to increase, uh, line items for admin salary, social security, uh, there is no overtime in relation to this position. Uh, group insurance and retirement, uh, a total across the three divided evenly of fifty-eight thousand ninety-six dollars and three cents.
I'll make a motion.
Do the motion, is there a second? Do the motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. That's the last amendment one.
Wants to do something.
Unless anyone else wants to amend anything else, we would just ask them for a motion, uh, we have the original motion and second for item B. So if we're done with discussion, then we will go to the vote. Seeing no further discussions, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. Item C, consideration of resolution for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty property tax request, different from property tax request for prior year. And for this, uh, this is resolution, so we can have discussion on this if you'd like, and then I would ask for someone to introduce the resolution when you're ready.
I'll introduce the resolution.
All right, the resolution has been introduced, and it does, it has resolution number twenty nineteen dash twenty-four. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
Second. Do the motion and a second, please register. Do the motion and a second, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. Item D is consideration of ordinance for adoption of a municipal budget to appropriate some unnecessary expenses and liabilities to provide for an effective date, and include an additional one percent in restricted funds.
And if I may, when you make the motion, move to adopt as amended.
This is ordinance, Greg.
Or the ordinance.
So I just need someone to introduce the ordinance as amended, and let's just discussion first.
Okay, which one is this?
So for item D is an ordinance, and because we have these, um, amendments, so if whoever wants to introduce the ordinance, just introduce the ordinance as amended, and then we would go through the process.
The things we changed and added in.
Just note that that's in there.
I'll introduce the ordinance as amended.
Okay, thank you. Uh, an ordinance to adopt the budget statements to be termed the budget and annual appropriation bill to appropriate some unnecessary expenses and liabilities, which include an additional one percent increase in restricted funds to provide for an effective date, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been written by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-four, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
So move.
Second.
Do the motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-four, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So move. Second.
Do the motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, again, the question is, should ordinance number twenty nineteen dash twenty-four be finally passed and adopted? Please register your votes, please weigh the votes. Since we have tabled item number nine, this will be the last ordinance for this evening, so I'll need one final motion to make that ordinance a part of the permanent record.
So move.
Second.
Do the motion and a second, please register your votes, please weigh the votes. Right, item number seven, consideration of request from Vinnie Binger, Binger of Magical Lights LLC to operate a holiday light display in Centennial Park for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty holiday season. Greg.
Uh, point of clarification when we say twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, uh, and Vinnie can talk about it, he's here. We wanted to cover this upcoming holiday season, this request, and then also include next holiday season. You'll see why when he, uh, kind of lays this out for you. Essentially, we were approached by, uh, Magical Lights LLC, uh, to put on a holiday light and Centennial display in Centennial Park, which, as you well know, every winter, we close up and just leave alone, uh, let the snow fall as it is. And so we were approached, uh, by Magical Lights, and so Vinnie is here tonight, he'll pass out some information about it, uh, and give you a little idea of what they're thinking of doing. I think just tentatively, he'll cover it again. They want to go take a look at it this winter, and then open in, in the, basically, the winter of twenty twenty.
That's correct, yeah.
That's.
The winter of twenty twenty, for the holiday season of twenty twenty, November, uh, was when we would like to officially start it. We'd like permission, um, to, you know, do some work and things like that. Uh, they're working with the Parks and Rec Department on what would be allowed, what we can come to a mutual agreement on for during the twenty twenty year, uh, to make setup possible for the holiday season. Uh, what you see in that handout is kind of some, uh, three D renderings of what this display would look like. This display would be the largest Christmas light show in Nebraska, and we want to bring it to Seward. Um, I live in Malcolm, um, and I've got a light display there on my personal property, and it has always been the intent for the last few years as we've built it, to grow it to eventually to a commercial venture like this. Um, we've looked in Omaha, we've looked in Lincoln, um, me being from not far from here, I've worked with the Chamber on some lighting projects, lighting ideas, I'm working with Concordia on some lighting projects for them, and we've just kind of fallen in love with this city of Seward and being embraced here, and we want to bring the show here.
Any questions or comments from the council? Yeah, Ellen?
Please just describe how this is all going to work and.
So what you see there, um, is kind of, uh, it's hard to, to maybe vision without knowing kind of what it is, but we tried to do the best we could in creating images of what it will look like. But what you'll see is almost a half a million lights animated to music, they will dance and sing and, and sparkle and blink and whatnot. So what will happen is, uh, we will charge a, a minimal fee, right now, we're estimating approximately ten dollars per car, make it very affordable for families and whatnot. They will enter the park, drive through the park, watching the lights, watching them, or listening to the music. Uh, it is, music is transmitted through an FM transmitter that displays inside their car, or comes out through their car, so there's not some large speakers or anything like that. And all the lights blink to the music, it's all animated, it's a drive-through experience, uh, five to six songs based on the flow of traffic. Uh, so approximately it would last twenty to thirty minutes.
Any questions or comments?
To kind of walk you through the timeline and, and why we had Vinnie come tonight, was in general, we wanted to get a general idea of the feel of the community and the city council, that if you were interested in continuing and pursuing this, we would work with Kelly and Vinnie to put together more formal terms, because as you know, in regards to how we operate the concessions at the pool and other different areas where we have venues that we use for commercial purposes, we have a lease agreement and some other things, and so we would go work through those processes and figure out what would be appropriate based on everyone's needs. But we didn't want to go through all that effort and come up with all these technical terms and lease rates and everything else, if you just in general didn't like the idea. So we felt it most appropriate to bring it here now. If you generally like the idea and want to move forward with it, then we'll work closely with Vinnie and Kelly. We'll come up with specific lease terms, liability, waivers, whatever else we need, sort all those issues out. Also, make sure that we start taking care of getting upfront with the utilities and Parks and Rec Department, to find out what other needs we may have. But we don't want to go too far down the line with it if you guys just were not interested in it.
So you wouldn't do anything then, this Christmas, it would be, but you'd use this time to like investigate and work through these things and figure out what would work?
Yes, the only thing you'll see from us, hopefully, uh, if everything works out and then looks promising, that, that it will move forward, we are going to put a little, um, deal which actually work times a day, um, with the county, put a little light display together on the county courthouse, just, we're liking very, very minimal in terms of a, a taste of what it will, what will be like, or what the technology will happen for the holiday light parade in November. So we'll, we'll kind of work on that, that's about the best you'd see from us this year, and so we'll spend the next year building and designing and planning. It, 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 a lot goes into it, so. Um, one thing I forgot to mention in terms of a, of a city expense, um, we don't plan, um, on putting any expenses on the city for this. Everything in terms of. putting any expenses on the city for this. Everything in terms of the utility, um, and, and any other expenses that we can possibly come up with that go along the way is, is all on us. And we just have to figure out with the electrical department how to figure that out, but the electrical expenses during that time that I use will be a hundred percent on us.
I think it sounds like a great idea.
To this point, would there be a motion to, uh, accept the request, understanding that we'll, there's a lot of details that need to be worked out?
I'll make a motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very excited to see what it looks like. Item number eight, consideration of approval of change order number one for the Columbia Avenue asphalt overlay project. Jake.
Good evening. Uh, this is a change order just to finalize the Columbia Avenue overlay project, uh, finalize some quantities that changed during construction. In general, we had some asphalt quantities changed and some sidewalk quantities changed, very typical for overlay projects. And overall, we ended up, uh, less than what the bid actually was based on the change order. Uh, but the change order and the payout application will finalize the project, and we're looking for, uh, we're looking to bid the, the next section of Columbia Avenue, which will be Lincoln to Hillcrest here in the coming months, along with the other projects that we need to accomplish.
Any questions or comments with Jake? If not, I'd ask for someone to make a motion, uh, regarding the change order number one.
Move to, go ahead. Move to approve the change order one?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. And then item eight A would be a consideration for approval of pay application number two, final and final acceptance of the Columbia Avenue asphalt overlay project. Is there a motion for approval of pay application number two?
I'll move for approval of pay application number two.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. All right, thank you, Jake. Item number ten is consideration of a resolution for a declaration of use of a wetland mitigation site for the Second Street Bridge Project in Nebraska Department of Transportation, project number B R O dash seven zero eight zero, parentheses, uh, twenty-seven, identified as Seward South or South Seward. Jake.
So this is a county project. Um, county is rebuilding Second Street Bridge. This is one of the sort of hoops that we, uh, have to jump through to allow them to do that based on the mitigation site that they have identified, um, which is one of our property, um, to allow them to mitigate wetlands.